Commissioner's Court. We're gonna start with Roll Call, Commissioner Yauer.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw here. Commissioner Schindel.
Here.
Commissioner Hough. County Clerk's Office.
Here.
And then we're gonna start, please stand and join us at Oakdale Fair. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we make decisions for Corrins County today. Please may we do in the best interest, we ask for rain, we ask that you protect our troops wherever they may be. And we will not meet again before the Thanksgiving holidays, so we ask that you be with our family and our friends and with everybody as they journey to and from wherever they may be going for Thanksgiving. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have your cellphones on? Will you please turn them off? Number five on the agenda is to conduct the canvass of the November 8, 2011 election.
Do you need to talk to the judge?
No, sir, I think we need to turn it on. You have the whole package in front of you? Very, very large package with all the computer printout on the election terms. Statewide, if y'all want to go through, we can go through one by one, we'll do the two locals. We don't have to do this big package, we're just, okay? Proposition number one, seventy-seven thirty-five four, twenty-two sixty-five against. Proposition number two, forty-one ninety-seven four, fifty-eight oh three against. Proposition number three, fifty-one eighty-four four, forty-eight sixteen against. Proposition number four, thirty-five thirty-five four, sixty-four sixty-five against. Proposition number five, fifty twenty-eight four, forty-nine seventy-two against. Proposition number six, fifty thirty-two four, forty-nine sixty-eight against. Proposition number seven, forty seventy-four four, fifty-nine twenty-six against. Proposition number eight, thirty-eight oh eight four, sixty-one ninety-two against. Proposition number nine, forty-eight twenty-seven four, fifty-one seventy-three against. Proposition ten, fifty fifty-five four, forty-nine forty-five against. For our local bond elections, the first one was the courthouse, bond election proposition number one, fifty-four fourteen four, forty-five eighty-six against. Bond election number two, which was the roads, we had seventy-two sixty-three four and twenty-seven thirty-seven against. Does anybody have any questions or did you want a breakdown? There's a box breakdown, breakdown for the breakdown that's in here from Heath Rickerstaff and Delgado, our bond election attorneys have sent us a large amount of paperwork that we must sign to make this, assigned, sealed, delivered election. Nothing can take place until the canvass is done and the canvass must be done between the sixteenth and the twenty-third, today's the eighteenth. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, how do you see any of the numbers that you're reading off, I don't know what page you're on.
Um.
This is a really.
She was just reading off her sentences.
Percentage.
Uh-huh, I didn't give the, we went through the Texas amendments first. Constitutional amendments and we wanted to find, it's on the little sheet up front. I believe Mr. Rickerstaff ran out of little yellow sticky sheets because we have a million pages to sign once we accept these canvass results. And let's just go through really quick. I went through most of this yesterday. I want to see if there's anything that we need to do. If you want it precinct by precinct, they can give it to you by precinct by precinct, but you have it in your package. Can you not move it, Mr. President? I'm sorry. And it's just all the same thing. On record, we just need to say that an order by the Commissioners' Court of Corrins County, Texas, canvassing returns and declaring the results of a bond election held November 8, 2011, and containing provisions necessary and insubstantial here to review from Commissioners' Court. It was then duly moved and seconded that the order be passed after discussion said motion carrying with the passage of the order prevailed by the following vote. So do you want it precinct by precinct or is the overall enough? Carol, did he tell you that we should read them precinct by precinct or was overall enough?
He gave it the same one where the other, I gave you both reports as well, there's precinct by precinct.
I think as long as you're hap, you all are happy with what you see. If you go through and see something that looks suspicious, you need to follow up. But normally they just add it up, make sure the numbers are all correct and then there's been no, according to I know, there's been no election request filed or recount.
And can I make a motion that we accept the canvass as presented for the November two, November 8, 2011 election?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Bear with me for a second, I'll put this up and I'll slide it out when I'm done. Number six on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove of establishing a ceiling for department expenditures without Commissioners' Court approval. Expenditures one thousand or more to require Commissioners' Court approval. And that's myself and LaWanna that we have put that on there. We've been talking, where's LaWanna?
I lost you.
Well, you're usually up front.
I know.
And this is only because we have a large amount of bills coming in that are just being moved around light and dark and we don't even know what a lot of them are. And so we're losing a lot of, a lot of money every year at the end of apartment budgets, spend downs, whatever. And we don't really know what they're going to. So we're just trying to get a better handle on the budget. Also talked to Mr. Busman about it. Put it on, ran it through the list service, see what other counties in the same similar situations did. And a lot of them have just cap on spending to get a budget that actually makes sense.
Previously, Corrins County's had a five hundred dollar ceiling. It has not been enforced as long as I've been here as far as reporting to the court.
It is, in effect, it's just never been enforced.
In what departments are we talking about?
All of them.
All of elections.
So the sheriff, anytime he wants to spend a thousand dollars, he's gotta come before Commissioners' Court. We have to approve it before he can spend a thousand dollars?
I mean, you can't say that you're gonna do it for one and not do it for all.
I mean, I'm just saying that it just really looks like micromanagement to me and it looks like it's really gonna bog us down. I mean, road and bridge, I mean, that could be just a couple of tires. You know, that could be one part.
I think LaWanna and I were actually looking at unusual expenses. But then where do you, LaWanna, when we were talking about this, where do you draw the line? What's an unusual expense for one and not for the other? The problem is, we're missing thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
Okay, but you look and look at this like Jeffrey, an injection pump for a motorator, okay? It's gonna be a thousand or two thousand dollars. So he puts it on the agenda, he waits till we have court. Then we say yes or we say no. Then he calls the guy and orders, say, oh, we'll, we'll start building it. Or you bring it in, we'll re, you know, it just, a lot of time goes by and it just, it's not gonna be, we're so far behind now, we can't keep up. And I just can't imagine doing something like this.
We can say unusual expenses.
Or maybe what we could do is, I'm just, maybe, 'cause we always have a five hundred dollar ceiling. Maybe we could do the thousand, that's actually giving them more, right? But because Jeff isn't the same, it isn't the same office business as everyone else. We could go maybe ten thousand on him because I understand, I did the same thing eight years, right? And everything costs us over a thousand dollars there.
But that's how, that's today, I mean, it doesn't.
No, I know that, but we could do this.
Excluding Jeff's department.
Well, define unusual expenses. What is, to you, what is unusual?
Well, when we have expenses coming in that we don't know what they are.
Why not, but unusual means, what does that mean?
Well, LaWanna, we went over, what on did we find?
Well, there's been things, printers purchased, copiers purchased, file cabinets purchased that are just over and above normal day-to-day office supplies, expenditures, operations.
Clark, what office are we talking about?
Several different ones, I don't have to listen.
Surely it's not the auditor's office that you're talking about?
Nope.
No, I figured so.
Well, does that point?
But we, we have.
Like, who are we targeting here?
We have a five hundred dollar cap, okay? And it's never been adhered to. Okay, so we've just been approving bills, but there's a lot of, our, our budget is just, if you would see our budget and the money that we're spending, we're losing a lot of money. And I mean, we went through it, we shouldn't have to sit there and go through bills like this. And all I'm asking for is a cap.
The only concern I would have for my department is if a computer goes down and I have to wait to get on the agenda and wait to get approval. Every day that we're down one computer is the day that we get farther, farther behind and with all the, we, yesterday we did over six hundred pages of documents and if one computer is down, we're, we're sunk.
One computer usually doesn't cost over a thousand dollars.
Yes, it does.
It's about twelve hundred.
Well, I mean, we can do something for that, I mean, but we have too many unusual expenditures coming out.
We, you know, we got so many, we got roads that we need to fix, we got a courthouse we need to fix. We got a lot of more important things to do than sit here and micromanage each and every department on a thousand dollars.
Controlling the budget is not micromanagement.
Well, I, you know, I don't know who you're targeting here, but it's just.
But there has been a five hundred dollar cap in place and we just have not been adhering to it.
Who's we, this, this court or prior courts?
It's in place, but nobody's been adhering to it.
Why not, we're not having a Christmas party either, for the first time.
That is not on here, that is not on here.
Hundred and seventeen years.
That is not on here. So anyway, we need, we need to get control of the money somehow. We've got money going everywhere. And we're not able to adequately budget when we don't know what people are actually spending on items that they're saying that they're spending. That's the problem that we're having.
So even if you need a computer.
I will come to you, Carl. I'll get your special approval. But we just need some type of cap to help us with this. The budget is not, it's not accurate and it's not adequate.
But if their budget is their budget, now we're telling them, yes, you have that money in your budget, but you can't spend it until you come to the court and we say you can spend it.
And the problem with that, Carl, is we're way over budgeting some departments and under budgeting some.
A certain budget with a certain amount of money in it. And now you're telling them, and George Hyde sat right there in that corner and told us that tried it in Bear County with the Sheriff's Department. He has his budget and they said, no, you can't spend this much on cars, you can't.
What happens is though, we have some budgets, okay? We, we under budgeted some and over budgeted others. And the people that are under budgeted are exempt.
LaWanna, does that, does that include like records management? Like when we order new books, we order in bulk because of the shipping. And so if we, if we ordered books under a thousand dollars, the shipping's gonna be a lot more. So when we order new books, new reams of paper for those books, which isn't normal reams of paper, it generally is, you know, it can be anywhere between twelve hundred and two thousand dollars to get the break on the shipping. Does that, is that included in this or is that a separate deal because that's records management?
Records management is still a budgeted expenditure, so the way this is currently written, it would include any expenditures. If other members of the court are so concerned about disappearing as if micromanagement because of the budget already being set, if y'all want to put it off till the next budget and then the court can be very explicit on what kind of expenditures can be done when the budget's set without court approval.
Ms. Casper, we spent thirty thousand dollars on a lawsuit to remove the treasurer from office. You have not mentioned that. That was not budgeted, but nobody brought an objection to that. Don't you think that's kinda ridiculous?
Carl, you're way off the agenda.
No, I'm just saying.
No, you're off the agenda and you're out of line.
But if there's this much money in the budget.
Commissioner, you're out of line. The problem that we're having.
You're gonna tell them you can't spend the money when the money's in their budget?
This is the problem that we're having. We're over budgeting some departments.
Yeah.
And we're not giving enough, other departments enough money to do their job. We need to figure out adequate and accurate budget.
Money from one department and put into another? Like if Jeffrey says, I need a pump, you say no?
What the problem is.
And he says, I have the money in my budget, but I can't spend it?
We're over budgeting some departments and not adequately budgeting others.
What departments are we over budgeting?
You know, the state got a lot of budgets and we didn't know that.
I just asked you, what departments are we over budgeting? That's all I'm asking.
You need to sit down with LaWanna, go through the bills, bill per bill.
Okay, LaWanna, which departments are we over budgeting?
As of right now, I couldn't answer that question because we're early in the year.
Okay.
But last year's budget, we had a lot of departments that had exits funds left in them.
And is that unusual?
Well, if you're trying to control your expenditure and keep.
How long have you been auditors? How long has something like that happened?
If you ask me a question, you should let me answer, Carl.
Go ahead.
I did, you didn't hear it though because you were rattling.
Okay.
We just have a lot of money missing out of our budget.
I asked you why we spent thirty thousand dollars on a lawsuit and it wasn't in the budget and nobody said anything.
That is out of line. Guys, this was just on here as LaWanna and I are the budget officers, I'm the budget officer for the county, LaWanna does the budget. We see a lot of money that is very unusually spent. We're going through it, we're just trying to keep track of the money and make sure everybody has their, the ability to do their jobs. We have some that have way excess and we have some that have no ability whatsoever to do their jobs. And that's just really not fair to the departments. It almost looks like favoritism or discrimination to some. We allow some people to have money just to run wild with and other peoples cannot even get their jobs done. And it's just a very, very horrid situation.
Yes, and we had a signal booster for this office that cost us two thousand dollars for personal cellphones. Nobody said anything about that?
The sheriff's in here, now wait a second, the sheriff's in here, he needs to use his phone.
Okay, no, but I'm just saying.
Times come in here, he needs to use their phone. And you know what, this applies to me too. So for my two thousand dollars, it applies to me too.
Carl, as far as road and bridge, where I see the budget, if Jeffrey budgets ten thousand dollars in our year for tires and forty thousand dollars in there for fuel, he don't have to come in here and ask, he gets a little fuel bill that's costing sixteen hundred dollars. He has that in his budget. He not have to come by every night. If it's for repairs, he has that, he has so much for repairs in his budget, he can spend eighteen hundred dollars without coming to us. It's not gonna micromanage his department. When he gets his budget the first of the year, he puts so much per item. And then if he wants to transfer, he has to come to us to transfer from one department to the other. Is that correct?
That sounds correct, but you know, like the clerk's office, if she has whatever amount of money for, say, computer expenses, if she's got that money in the budget, does she still have to come before Commissioners' Court?
Micromanaging what they can buy each item. If they put it in their budget to get it in there for the year, it's in there. They don't have to come to us for, for changing that. If it's transferring, does he spend it on something else and they have to come to us and ask? That's the way I understand it.
So if they're transferring it?
Carl, what we're doing is we're trying to, you know, get, get hold of the budget. Like I said, we have departments that are able to spend frivolously. We also have, nobody caught six thousand dollars in chairs or eight thousand dollars in chairs ordered from different departments. We have that too and I will provide you copies with that. And that was done in spin down. But we also have a nine-one-one department, a nine-eleven department that provides our emergencies that does not have the adequate room, the facilities or the equipment to do their job. But we have sixty-eight thousand dollars to be spending on furniture that was not even in our furniture budget. So all we're trying to do is keep things at a normal level to make sure that we are actively reporting what's spent. We had a two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollar furniture budget, did we not, LaWanna? And where are we in actual furniture? We're up to almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in actual furniture with another how much getting ready to go out, another forty thousand dollars in furniture getting ready to go out?
I don't know what the actual quote is for the.
I just found the. P.O. And it just came through for DPS and adult probation, so we can start getting them moved. So yes, we do have a lot of money going out.
The furniture was mine, the chairs were mine and I remember when we were talking about the furniture. I don't know who said it, but we, we had the furniture quote from Carl. And if somebody said there was any money, yes, any money left in your budget and you wanted to order chairs, you could, which is what we did. So that furniture was mine and it was four thousand dollars or forty-four hundred dollars or, and it was just, it was chairs and it was floor mats for the, for the carpeting and stuff, that was mine. But I, somebody did say, if you had money left in your budget and you wanted to order good chairs, you could.
And so all we're trying to do is keep, keep this done. And like I said, the five hundred dollar cap's been in place. I'm not sure if you were the part of the court or pastor, if they wanted before you, they passed it. And all we're trying to do is at the end of the year, when it comes time for budgeting, and we're all sitting in there, we're going over those budgets, LaWanna and I are responsible for this budget. We get it to you and Commissioners' Court passes it, that budget's out of whack. Some people have way more money than they need and some people don't have enough money to do their job. And that's just simply not fair to every department.
And I think the nine-one-one, she's not here, asked for equipment and part-time help and y'all denied her.
We did not give her adequate to do her job and she's, she's busy out there and ACOG took her funding.
Right, right.
So we need to get something, we need to be fair to every department and we're not being fair.
We all got her, she asked for the money and y'all didn't get it.
To be funded properly to do the job.
That's right. But anyway, just until this is done, until we get a handle on spending, we're not giving adequate, accurate budgets. The budgets that we're putting out, they're almost deceptive in nature when you look at them. You don't even know what that money's being spent for. So all I'm saying is we need to, and if this doesn't work, I ask that we come back and do it. But until then, this is becoming very, very difficult on LaWanna and I to try to figure out what these things are and what we're doing. And so if you guys don't think we need that ceiling, but for right now, I make a motion that we do have a ceiling for departmental expenditures without Commissioners' Court approval and expenditures of a thousand dollars or more require Commissioners' Court approval.
Okay, but, but my concern is the computers. If we're out of computer and we're down a week, it, it, come spend the day.
This came back because of unusual expenses. It really didn't come, come back because of everyday expenses, it came out of unusual stuff. But it's happening from spend downs and other items. And so if people want to do this, I say that I'll make my motion that I, a ceiling for departmental expenditures, unusual departmental expenditures and expenditures of one thousand dollars or more require Commissioners' Court approval. I say unusual.
Or how about rather than.
Out of the ordinary.
Or out of budgeted line items. You know what I mean, rather like, if we give them money because we, we control the budget, we give them, so say seventeen dollars for computers or something, they can get what they need out of computers, but they can't get something else out of anything that we gave them money. We, it's like a line, line budget, you know?
So that they actually use the money for what it is, for what they say it is, rather than using it as.
Maybe they could put a motion like that.
Could we do that, Mr. Busman?
Rather than putting unusual, you know, 'cause that sounds, you know, out of budgeted line items.
Well, but when you, when you say the expense for our computers, I mean, new computers, software, it needs to be defined so that you know what that item it covers. Now, I think what happened, some of the budgets were kinda quasi as to whether or not they actually fit the description of what was supposed to be covered by that particular budget item, am I making sense?
Yes, I know you were because LaWanna and I sat there and went over the bills, so I know you made the decision.
What you're trying to do here, I, I worked for NASA. And now we had to do the budget, I mean, we'd go back to our own budget and try to spin it down because we wouldn't get cut. That's not the case here. Now your budgets are done, out of what is projected to cost. And so anything that goes that outside of those items should be approved by Commissioners' Court.
That's what I'm saying, as long as the expenditure is within that line item, it's fine.
That's right.
They don't have to come over here.
The problem that you're talking about is items that.
That are out of there.
Not exactly under that line item.
So can we say not in that line item or unusual?
What do you think, Mr. Busman?
I think so.
So.
And you believe.
Because I might find my make, my motion to make it not in that line item or unusual. And that way we don't have a bunch of frivolous spend down that we can't account for because it comes up to about sixty or seventy thousand a year.
Has your motion been seconded?
No, but that's my motion.
That's what I was, I was doing, 'cause as long as it's within the line item, it's, it's fine, you know.
So then, a budget, which for instance, the auditor's budget this year, there was in the computer expense, a new computer. I don't have to come to court and say, I've ordered the computer, I'm going to pay for the computer out of this line item. It's in the budget.
You can spend that, but you can't get that money and go buy a new desk.
That's correct.
Right, you can't go out like that desk over here.
That's right, that's the point.
It's computer expense and.
So I remember LaWanna knowing that.
Like office expense would be considered paper pens, but whatever general office expense.
That sounds.
Because if not, our budget looks, if you, if you would look through it, there's a lot of money. And I mean, LaWanna and I kind of added it up just on a leak through, doing rounding. There's a lot of money that we can't account for that's general spend down. And when it comes up to these types of large numbers that LaWanna and I came up with, we could easily add more employees, we could buy more sheriff's cars, we could buy anything. You have a lot of stuff, we could hire deputies, we have full-time employees walking out the windows and unusual expenses. And that's all we're trying to control. And I think we owe the taxpayers that.
Needs to be controlled.
And we owe the taxpayers that.
What do you define as unusual? I mean, we, we need to know what your.
He said out of line item or unusual. You can't get any more specific than that. If it's a question of that, out of line item or unusual. So if you have a fifteen hundred dollar computer budget and you buy a ladder, that's out of line item and unusual.
Why would I buy a ladder?
But I'm just saying, I'm just giving you a general.
Example.
It's an example.
Okay, so, and LaWanna probably answered this. At the end of the year, do I need to stay within my line item on that budget or do I need to stay within my bottom line?
Your line item, that's what.
Unless modified by the Commissioners' Court.
So if I, my budget's thirty-five thousand dollars a year and I go over on one, but I'm under on the other, but my bottom line is still thirty-five thousand dollars.
As long as your deviation between line items isn't.
Wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry.
As long as your deviation in your line item isn't going to exaggerate your expenditure. And if you had an extra rema paper that you still had thirty dollars left in computer expense and you were short in your office expense, that's a reasonable adjustment.
Because I had, so we can make, well, and I guess in our, can we make adjustments between travel accounts? I mean, J.D. and I have.
Yes, 'cause those.
Make us that obvious there at least.
So my motion is still unusual. Out of line item.
And only the. Any opposed? Thing in this whole thing is to try to make sure that we're budgeting for each department to operate to their needs. Not to have one department over here with an additional eighteen thousand left at the end of the year and this other department was unfunded.
But that's what's happening. So anyway, we just, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
We went to that.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda was to discuss approve, disapprove, revision of item number twenty-one from the October thirty-first, two thousand eleven minutes, to include motion in its entirety. I put that on there. That had to go back to a contract that we had with, that we had just, I guess, met with GEO. And in the motion, it was one of those GEO things where it was to not supersede or trump any other motion. And I just want it captured in the minutes, so in our contract, when we meet with the hospital, because everybody has a different idea of what those says. And I don't want anybody saying that we have not superseded something. So Mr. Busman and I went back and looked at the tape and it did say supersede or trump, and I just want to capture the motion. Does anybody have any questions? So I make a motion that we have the motion in its entirety. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is to discuss approve, disapprove, increasing the county increase OFS fees to accommodate fee charge by designated representative. Ms. Chester's not here, but she brought this to my attention and I think we discussed it in budget, but maybe not, did not get it implemented. When we have a septic tank fee charge, what do we, he's charging us more than what we're charging or something? It's not carrying through properly and all we're doing is trying to get a pass-through fee.
What it is is, he's charging us two hundred and we're charging two-ten and then the state, the state takes ten of it, so we stay with the numbers.
Right.
For that, for that commercial. And the residential, I think he's charging, I think on that one, we're, we're staying with forty for the county. We stay with forty, he charges a hundred, the state takes thirty, something like that. But, and then we called some of the counties and Wilson County, Wilson County was, I think they were at four hundred, four hundred and ten or four hundred and twenty for commercials and like three hundred and fifty for residential. He's still gonna charge us two hundred, but what I was thinking, how did the motion stay? What I was thinking, I don't know, this is what I was thinking for commercial. I was thinking five hundred and residential four fifty, or four hundred.
Five hundred, four fifty?
That's what I was thinking.
Was Wilson County out, and I asked too and I can't remember what you told me.
Over four hundred for commercial? No, residential was three fifty. But we could match, we could match with them.
I know, 'cause that's.
But, but yeah, I understand, but the only thing is that the paperwork on all these septic tanks and everything, the county has to take care of it for life. I mean, we have them in our system, not for ten years, five years. We have them there for the next seventy, eighty, hundred years until they reboot them or whatever. But we're, I mean, I'm fine, you know, I just thought five or four fifty, but I wanna go with maybe like four and three fifty? Just go up.
What's the county's doing?
It's up to you.
Is that your motion for?
Well, I mean, I'm kinda asking opinions here.
I think that'd be okay, 'cause where are we at, LaWanna, a hundred twenty, two hundred?
I couldn't tell you.
It's close to that, is that what you're, is it a hundred twenty and two hundred?
We don't have those figures in our packet, right?
We're.
No, because I thought Sharon's gonna be able to tell us.
For what, what they're charging us or what we're charging?
What we're charging.
And we're charging, residential is one seventy and commercial's two-ten right now.
You have to go actually accommodate it because until you get the information.
I think all the fees, all the fees that Sharon charged there.
Because on the, on the, on the commercial, they're charging us two hundred.
We didn't realize we were going to lose that much in the state. May talk the rest of it all.
And the state's taking ten, we stay with nothing for that. I mean, for all our labor, for all the emails, for all the paperwork, everything, we stay with nothing.
Make two here, make two.
I should, I mean, minimum on the commercial, I think it should be at least four-ten, which would at least, we stay with two for all the paperwork, emails, all the phone calls, everything that Sharon does, we keep it for life, and that's only for two hundred dollars for the next fifty, sixty, seventy years.
I heard the judge say.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Like Wilson County, do you have the figures from Wilson County?
I think, we both called him, we both talked to him, but I can't remember what you told me, what's it?
So we could just match them and then make them.
I know that.
There's no.
It's working for them.
Yeah, there's no caps on it.
Their residential was three fifty for sure.
Yes.
And their commercial, I thought it was, I can't remember, it's.
It was four or five.
It was four something, it wasn't five, because that's why I had two-five on the for commercial.
So we would just use exactly the same as Wilson County.
And we use the same person.
You know what, maybe for commercial, maybe for commercial five, because when it's commercial, I mean, commercial means you've got to make money. So, and then either residential.
You're thinking it's five or three fifty.
Because, you know, residential's different with commercial.
Yeah, they're making money off of it.
You're making money off of it.
So, so to accommodate the fee, what's your motion?
I would, I would say, I mean, my motion would be to increase the commercial to five hundred and the residential to three fifty.
I second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, county treasurer's report September thirtieth, two thousand eleven, that's five. Any reports are in there? There's, yeah, there's both reports in then, and I don't know which way you want to do this on the, on these two that need to be signed. You know, why don't you just leave what you gave me?
But yeah, but everybody got a copy, now I'm going to give Carol a copy, so just y'all have those.
I'll pass it around.
Pass it around and if your copy is hers and you don't want one then.
Well, you gave me extras. You gave me, like, you gave me extras and I think, did y'all get, did y'all each.
Oh, no, 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 everybody should have gotten one.
They should have, and there was extras, you made extras actually.
That might then care for Carol and Luanne.
You made five extra of each.
Okay, so all.
So I gave Missus and you.
Uh-huh.
In October and September.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I don't know if you gave Carol and Luanne one.
I got Carol hers and Luanne got hers, but I didn't know if you wanted to.
That I read you sign before we sign it.
Just sign, since I signed mine.
Is that mine completely? Is that a copy?
That's an original?
Do you want to sign her original? Is that what you want?
And it'll be Carol's copies.
Okay.
And then y'all can keep those as y'all's copies.
Okay. I mean, if anybody's interested, I went through it this way.
It's fine.
Did y'all go through it? I mean, I went through.
See, these two are Lily Carol's copies.
Let me have such a first September and then let me. Luanne, did you go through it too?
Yes.
Did you find anything?
I went to, yes, no.
Okay, so I have, yeah, so my motion is to approve the county treasurer's report dated September thirtieth, two thousand eleven.
September.
What?
September.
What? All right.
I thought she was lost somebody else.
Was there thirty days in September?
Yes.
Yeah. September thirty, well, that's why September said thirtieth, wait, what, why are you asking me? September thirtieth, two thousand eleven.
You're right.
And they're all.
No, you're right.
Okay.
So she's in the signs.
All in favor say aye.
And that's been from you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll just add some confusion.
No more.
Okay, number ten on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, county treasurer's report dated ten thirty-one, two thousand eleven, and you just left me this thing one by.
Yes, well, it's October's.
And I went through this one and I didn't find any that looked like Luanne, did you go through it?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have any questions, it seems to be in order now. So I make a motion that we approve the county treasurer's report dated ten thirty-one, two thousand eleven. I got my.
Second.
Pass around.
Did I get it?
No, there was another.
James.
James.
Where were we, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? You have a second on that one. Motion carries. Number eleven is to discuss approve, disapprove, changes to personnel manual regarding holiday pay for regular parts-time employees.
And I think I handed that to you just now, pardon. It's the one that's in bold, is to change to, we discussed that the last time.
All that, y'all made a change?
Yeah, we made a change, just make sure this is definitely where we wanted to read.
And that, that change that we made was on one A, right, Luanne?
Yes.
That's what you asked for.
Yeah.
Part-time employees will be paid the number of hours on their regular scheduled day. If the holiday falls on that scheduled day, all part-time employees' schedules should be submitted to the treasurer's office in order to receive correct holiday pay. And that's what we agreed on last time, because they had given it to them, but this by accident taken away just with the wording, so we're just giving it back.
All right.
Motion to approve the personnel policy manual regarding holiday pay for regular part-time employees.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve is to discuss approve, disapprove, amending the fiscal year two thousand twelve budget for the installation of the heat pump in the district courtroom as per bid eleven nineteen four forty, eleven nine twenty-nine forty-one. Luanne?
This was not in the budget. When the budget was completed, the heat pump has been installed and is operational. Of course, we will no longer be having court in the district courtroom due to shifting issues, but we need to pay sports for their work.
Now, Luanne, since we just wasted twelve thousand dollars, what are we going to do?
You remember, I asked at the time that this was discussed, if court couldn't be somewhere else on a temporary basis, but the commissioners' court voted to do that, and so therefore to pay sports, we have to.
Right, I understand that. But I think the other thing that it was going to be taken out and used in another building, what we, well, I guess, do you want to figure that as we go along?
Well, how, would we have known that the building was going to shift and we're going to have an earthquake?
Earthquake did cause it.
What, what caused it, Mr. Busman?
Stop it, that's not what's on the agenda. And y'all are not going to sit in here and do that, that is out of line, stop it. The only question is, what are we going to do? We have, I mean, I know we had talked about taking, never mind. I'll make a motion that we amend the budget.
One way or another, we have the paper.
All in fa, was there a second?
Yes.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one's authorized issuance of the payment of out-of-cycles smart air conditioning for the installation of the heat pump in the district courtroom as per bid, and the author's Luanne. So we just need to make, we need to pay them for the work that they did, so I make a motion we pay them for the work they did.
I second this.
All in fa, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we need to put something back on the agenda now to get, to reclaim that new equipment?
I don't think that needs to be worried about until they're ready to actually begin restoration in phase two, three, or four, or whatever it might be when they actually tackle the.
But I don't want to be so.
You can always dig it out of the rubble.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, amending the budget for changing software providers for the sheriff's department, that's you, Luanne.
I provided for inclusion in your packet a copy of the local government code, section one-one-one, point zero-one-zero, section C, and it says, the commissioners' court may authorize emergency expenditure as an amendment to the original budget only in a case of grave public necessity to meet an unusual and unforeseen condition that could not have been included in the original budget through the use of reasonably diligent thought and attention. I don't think the court can legally amend the budget to change software providers because the sheriff's department is operational now under the current provider. It may not tie in with the other offices, but he does have operation, and if that was being considered, it should have been included in the budget workshops. We currently only have seventeen thousand dollars in the sheriff's department computer expense, and that is for the software maintenance for a year for his current provider.
So what the deal is, is new software wouldn't require, meet the definition of emergency, is what you're saying?
That's right, because he is operational. If he did not have anything and he needed to become operational, that'd be one thing, but he has a software system and it does operate.
So this wouldn't be a, something legal to pass on that, because it's not an emergency.
I have to agree with the.
Let me ask a question. You're able to operate, did they put some receivers and satellite dishes or something to transfer, you're still able to operate?
Yeah, we say they've operated under the old paper term, which is tied to the, to the tax assistance office and the Wilems' office.
And the treasurer's office.
And who?
And the treasurer.
And the treasurer's office, okay. That's what we've been working off of, I think about twelve, thirteen, fourteen years. The reason it was brought up, when we talked about this back a year or so ago, or longer, I thought this thing was actually in place, because we all sat there with this man Wiley from Hill Country Software, and we all got together up there and we talked about this package that we're going to tie in the county clerk, the county attorney, the district clerk's office, and the sheriff's department, and we talked about that. And, and all this.
Is it budgeted for it?
I thought it was budgeted for it, because we all talked about, said when we all move into this new building, that everybody's going to be there. And in my mind, it was there. And that's like the cameras and the phones and all this other stuff, it was there. Well, lo and behold, it wouldn't. That's why I brought it up.
It wasn't in this year's budget, David, because that would have been your department, not anything included with the new building or anything else. And so when you did your budget request, you should have included it in there.
Well, I thought it was in there already.
Made yourself a note.
Next year.
It doesn't matter. But the present condition that we have as a courthouse, it may change in due course.
Well, no.
It's in the new building.
No, but the building is big, it's.
Okay, but right now, but today we can't.
We cannot do it, right?
We cannot do it today.
So we need a motion to disapprove, amending the budget for changing software providers for the sheriff's department.
I second it. Was that your motion or you just read it? I second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, authorizing the county auditor's ad for a new software provider for the sheriff's department, on to Luanne.
That's a moot point.
And so, I guess that doesn't matter.
No action.
No action, okay. Number sixteen is to discuss approve, disapprove, posting GEO job openings on the county website. I put this on here, Gina Larson from GEO contacted me and asked me if they could advertise their job openings on the county website. So I asked Mr. Busman and he said to all the people that do our website, so I called Tac and I talked to Brittany Lang. She said there's probably not a problem with it as long as commissioners' court approves it. The reason that they asked us to do it is they're trying to help find people to help take care of our inmate.
I think, I think that's the gentleman, but if he is there in the.
Kind of like a motion to approve posting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the only issue that I had on it was that, you know, I talked to Judge Abada and she explained to me, you know, was the issue I had was, I didn't know, you know, we do it for them, everybody's going to come up on us, but we actually have, what do you call it, an interest with them?
Right, we have a contract that everyone agrees this. I was there to make it a little easier.
I was concerned that everybody was going to come up and want, you know, we were going to, well, you know, we did it for one, we're going to do it for everyone. We're going to have to put everybody on the website.
There are people for our business.
And we're just going to put their link on here.
They got, what, thirty of our inmates over there.
Yeah, so actually we have an interest there, that's why.
I wouldn't even have contemplated it if we didn't.
But we wouldn't be doing this for everyone, right? And they come up to us, we have something, a backup.
I mean, I'm not going to be exclusive about what they can put on there, you know, any job opening, but they, they do, they do a lot for us because of our interest with them. I mean, they don't, you know what I'm saying?
Because this is your self-serving thing.
Yes.
I mean, whatever we put on there for advertising, if they go, if they can't get the people to op, to operate the building, we're going to have to find another place. Pretty simple.
I just didn't want to get caught up in something, you know?
I understand.
Having everyone.
I understand.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve posting GEO job openings on the county website.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, any opposed? I'm sorry, did you?
No.
Motion carries. Number seventeen, discuss approve, disapprove, Karnes County Road Bridge Department entering into a rental agreement with RDO Equipment Company for John Deere, six fifty dozer, and H U Jeff.
This is a piece of equipment that I, that I need to start the job on the, on the two bridges on two oh seven and on the Walfer Crossing, and we're going to need it to help build the banks and start pushing the rock around the place so we can get that done before the, if we do it during the rainy season. And this, what we can hear is the county just needs to approve insurance to the dealership because we, we have to insure the tractor.
Are you going to rent it?
Yes, sir. I think by number.
No option to own or anything like that, just renting it?
Just renting it. Well, there is a clause in there, you know.
But Jeff, it says that this is from eleven to two thousand eleven to one to two thousand twelve.
It's term.
Two months?
Yeah, but do you already have it?
No, we do not have it.
He was going to get it.
So we'll change the dates, are you going to change the dates on this?
Yes, we'll change it.
See, he was going to get it, but then he didn't know that he had put it on there.
So in the motion, we got to put it for two months?
Yeah.
So what's it going to be?
Two months, two months, right.
Do you think you're going to need it longer, so you don't have to come back, or what? Do you think you're gonna need it longer, so you don't have to come back, or what?
I'm thinking with it too much, I should be able to knock it out. So I'm hoping to get it done in that.
In two months?
Maybe it starts to rain.
What about the?
Well, rainy deal, they're gonna give me.
Don't give that back to you?
Yeah, you can throw this back on rainy deal.
But you'll just change the dates, it's all announced, I'm making sure you get your full two months, we get our full two months, Carnes County gets their full two months.
Anything on heavy equipment rental is, is based on a forty hour a week.
Okay.
That's always based on that.
Okay.
Can your motion make sure it's to allow the judge to execute the rental agreement?
Or you can all give me that copy, and then you'll have to provide the coverage on the trucker. They're gonna need a copy of that.
So they're just charging the county for forty dollars a week?
Yes, that's all, that's all, all heavy equipment is based on that forty hour a week.
And smarts just come out of your budget?
This, I'm gonna have to move some stuff around for it, you know, get, we got to have this piece of equipment to get the job done. I didn't have anything for him.
And the B is what, Jeff?
Uh, I don't have a big one.
What about that Road and Bridge special now?
About that one? I think it's five thousand, two hundred dollars, something like that, a month.
It's urgent, because the text docks threaten, for them those bridges, if we don't get them fixed.
That's pretty much urgent.
There will not have to be an amendment, because it can be paid out of Road and Bridge special.
That's what I asked, the Road and Bridge special?
Right.
Okay. Can I make a motion to approve Carnes County Road and Bridge Department entering into a rental agreement with RDO Equipment Company for John Deere six fifty dozen and allowing the county judge to execute the rental agreement? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, I'll sign this for you before you leave.
Okay, thank you.
Get away around for a second.
Okay, no problem.
The next one on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, selection of cleaning contract for Carnes County offices on the square.
Okay, we had, had two bids on offices on the square. Did you receive a letter this week from King Carpet? I talked to Jimmy, he said he would. Egg cleaner's own, Mark Garcia, Matthew Garcia, had one bid, and King Carpet had one bid, which we discussed, not to go. Anyway, the egg cleaners own included a thousand dollar bond in here, Western Insurance Company. King Carpet says they have insurance, and they do not have bond, they provide a bond wherever is needed. The two, two bids were on a weekly basis, that's every two weeks cleaning the annex building. King Carpets, forget a monthly payment of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents, which is four hundred and thirty-one dollars, thirty cents a week. Matt Garcia's was thirteen thousand and something dollars, which came to five hundred and nineteen dollars a week, basically doing the same clean. Most buildings need cleaning, the hallway need cleaning, restroom need cleaning. Of course, there's another item on here, next item, but do we need to get this cleaned every two weeks, once a month? Any ideas about how it should be cleaned, what should be done?
I guess my only question with that be, is, I mean, like, if you repossess, like, deep cleaning every two weeks, I mean, do you actually, what normal person or normal schooler, I mean, unless it's really heavy traffic, deep cleans every two weeks? I mean, it seems like to me it'd be easier to hire people to go in there every day. Yes, ma'am, Lil' One?
My question with that is, deep cleaning's gonna be required probably weekly, unless our current janitorial staff does normal day-to-day cleaning.
Well, and that needs to be done, I mean, but that's a lot of money to put out for one building.
Let me, then, over there, I mean, it's, there's coffee stains on the floor, there's urine in there.
But people need to be in there every day, and somebody needs to go, we need to hire somebody to go in there every day.
But we also have a janitor that could do that kind of stuff daily.
We do, but we have one janitor for how many buildings? I mean, y'all, realistically, that's gonna be hard to go.
This is a personnel issue, which you might wanna go into executive session if we want to discuss that. But for the amount that's being paid for a full-time employee, no building is getting full-time service.
Can we go into executive session, boss?
Well, that's what it says. Here.
Does it need the definition of personnel?
Yes, it does.
It's on the last page.
Yeah, I think, I think you can.
Need a motion?
On this item, or on the next one? Um, shouldn't it be on the next one where we're discussing the part-time position?
That would be a lot better, because you got other items to discuss that would probably fall in here. But if you wanna go into executive session today, would the, would you have to take that? I think you can't.
Right.
But you're gonna be limited to the item that's on there.
Carl said, let's take no action on eighteen, I'm agreeing with that, move to nineteen to see what we need to do on the next, are y'all in agreement with that? Carl, crazy.
You need to look, what is she?
No action? What?
Say.
Carl, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said no action on eighteen.
Oh, was that a motion?
No.
Just no action. Just no action.
All right. Just to move on.
Make a motion to take no action? So number nineteen is to discuss approve, disapprove, hiring new employee for the maintenance janitorial services. You made a motion that we're going to executive session. All in favor, seconded by James, all in favor, say aye. So on nineteen, there's been a decision, that's right.
See, you're off the record.
Back on the record?
Putting it in the central.
Excuse me, we're back on the record, please. We entered exec, executive session at ten forty-eight AM, and came out of executive session at eleven AM, the decisions were made, and we discussed hiring and advert, possible advertising of a part-time employee for maintenance in janitorial.
Okay, so.
Now you gotta do your motion.
On number nineteen, uh, I feel like it, uh, we need some more daily clean, this thing. If we accept number eighteen, this clean every two weeks is not enough, we need to make more daily clean than that annex. So I feel like we need to hire a full-time employee, and we have to replace Paul.
Can we capture, Bob, in our motion to advertise with this person also, so we can get somebody started, to allow Lil' One to advertise?
Let's see why not?
So we can get somebody in there sooner?
That's part of hiring.
Does that part of your motion be?
State it the way you want to state it?
No, 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 it's your motion, you stated the way you want it to state, but I just asked the Mr. Buckman if we can capture advertising, or allow Lil' One to advertise.
It's part of hiring someone, that's the first step. When you had some applicants that they were expired, I mean, not expired, but the retirement's expired.
You wanna state that in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we advertise for hiring a full-time employee for thirty-eight hours a week to work in maintenance and janitorial services.
You could go further to any, if a suitable candidate is allowed, we can hire him under the same motion.
Thirty-eight or thirty-nine hours?
Thirty-eight hours.
Thirty-eight.
Do that under the same motion, I think, because that's part of, of.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number twenty on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, closing the checking account at the Falls City National Bank in the name of previous tax assessor collector and transferring the monies to the county treasurer, and that's Ms. Frankie. Ms. Frankie, there you are.
This is the previous tax collector's account. Uh, it's been left open, due to the fact that there was not a complete audit done on the office whenever I took over. I opened up my only accounts in the name to where I would not, I am not able to touch this account, my chief deputy is. There has not been any transactions done on the account. So I just wanted to get y'all's approval, if you want me to turn the money, or have Darlene transfer the money to the treasurer's office, or just leave the account open.
I think it would be fine. Y'all see a reason? I mean, if it's just sitting there dormant, why have it?
It's just sitting there dormant, uh, probably if anything would come up, the statute of limitations out.
Can I make a motion that we approve closing the checking account at the Falls City National Bank in the name of the previous tax collector and transferring the monies to the county treasurer? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Number twenty-one on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, construction and maintenance agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and Carnes County. You have that in here? It's for the waystation. And this is the one that, uh, y'all can read it if you want to, we can read it aloud, we can do whatever, but Paul with the Texas Department of Transportation, is yours one in there?
I've already started, Mr. Corbin.
You got two?
All right, there.
What it is, is Paul actually sent us one, Paul Wrights, who's the district engineer over here, he sent us a copy of his. Sheriff and I looked at it, so we sent a copy to Bob, and Bob had, like, all other kinds of stuff going on, so we sent it to Ross and Aaron, and Aaron, who works with Ross and George. They sit down and they hammered this out with Paul Wrights and myself. We made a bunch of sheriff, changes, took it to the sheriff, took it to Jim, everybody kept reading it, and reading it, and reading it. I think we're where we wanna be now. What this is going to allow us to do is open that waystation on one eighty-one and one twenty-three with our overweight vehicles, and the state, y'all might've seen a bunch of stuff dumped in that.
Yeah, bargeage.
Yeah, bargeage over there, that's, that's, so they'll put that in for us. And what, what had happened is, when we first started this, it was going to be a very, very expensive project, because we didn't have anybody to do that, but when they decided to put that light in right there, they said if we would have this done before they started construction, that they would give us materials, and they would do this for us. So what, what we did is, we tried to get this prepared before November, because November was their deadline, wasn't Mr. B, that they were looking at for their light, and they told us to get it done November prior to, so when they start working on the light, that it'd be done. And what this does is it tells them that they're going to give us that material that they dumped in that bargeage, and what our responsibilities are, to keep it clean, to put in the scales, our requirements, and we've gone back and forth on it and beat it to death, so it should be, be pretty clean.
It's a county, but they're gonna, might, kinda halfway main hand, but they're also gonna do the striping and everything for us, so it'll be a safety issue, they're gonna use all the text docks, striping, the county don't have to do that, they will do it for the lanes that when you come off of one eighty-one southbound, they have a lane that you pull into, after you get past the red blink, or red light at one twenty-three and one eighty-one, so it's gonna be under text dock approval, safety issue, and that's why we was pushing on this real hard, we want them to, to do that for us.
They're doing the engineering for us.
All the engineering.
And we're gonna sit in, the sheriff has a guy that's gonna sit in the scales.
Okay, I make a motion to approve construction and maintenance agreement between the Texas Department of Public Transportation in Carnes County.
I'll second it.
Wait, wait, I apologize, I didn't put on there, will you allow me to execute?
And allow the county judge to execute.
Thank you.
That agreement.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-two on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, the selling of two vehicles as listed, uh, one nineteen ninety-seven Dodge extended cab truck, one GMC animal control truck, and the author's Jeff.
Okay, uh, I don't know why I thought that was GMC, I was, I was wrong with that one, it said ninety-seven.
Ford, Ford.
Yeah, it's a.
F one fifty.
Which one is that, Jeff?
Uh, the GMC, it's actually F one fifty, that's animal control, but for some reason, I thought it was a GMC, I don't know why I got that wrong, but anyway, that's, I just wanted correction on that. Uh, the Dodge is one of our trucks, uh, we're pulling it out of the fleet, because the transmission is shelling out, you know, the repair transmission more than once before, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let it rest, and we had another truck I put online, so here pretty quick, I'm gonna start running out of pickup, but I've still got enough to survive.
Mr. B, if we advertise it's GMC, can we amend our motion to capture it as F one fifty, so you can go ahead and get rid of it?
I don't see why not, because we're talking about the same vehicle.
Can I make a motion that we approve selling the two vehicles as listed, below, one nineteen ninety-seven Dodge extended cab truck, and an amended F one fifty animal control truck? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is number twenty-three, it's to discuss approve, disapprove, sending a letter to M.J. Boyle contractor notifying him to proceed, construction work is currently under contract for phase one of the Carnes County courthouse restoration project, and the author's Carl. Sue, where are you? Sue's helping me. Where's Sue? Yeah, yeah, there you are. Sue, I sent Sue letterhead, because Sue says she's gonna be working on some of this with me and helping us out here to get this done, and she wrote this letter, it's dated today's date, November eighteenth, two thousand eleven, to Mr. M.J. Boyle, the general contractor at nineteen nineteen North St. Mary Street in San Antonio, Sex, with seven eight two one two. Mr. Boyle, the November eighth bond election for restoration of the Carnes County courthouse is passed, and the courthouse is scheduled to be totally vacated within the next week. The county is now ready to move forward with restoration work, please consider this official notice received with the construction work, as it is currently under contract for phase one of the Carnes County courthouse restoration project. Our county looks forward to working with you and your company on this project, Barbara Nigra Shaw, Carnes County judge.
Something you may wanna consider, because the sheriff is still in there, because you don't have the money to move him over.
Hey, we're off, don't worry about it, we're losing.
Well, it's just.
I'm waiting on the phone line, I think.
But then the other thing is, there has been some changes in the situation since that bid was met. We now have the bat problem, we also have problems with the things that falling off the courthouse. Now, it seems to me that to be fair, you need to notify the bidder, the contractor who has the contract, because it's not the same that he bid on before. It is different now, but it's, it's your choice.
Well, you know what, Mr. B, we have all the video and stuff, I don't think we're hiding anything from Mr. Boyle, if he wants to come see it, he wants to come look at it, let him come see it, let him come look at it, until then, let him go. That's my motion, I make a motion that we execute this letter, and if Mr. Boyle has issues, or if he sees something, that he's saying that we're not hearing part, on our part of the contract, that he needs to come to us and tell us that.
I second it.
Because all this stuff is not new stuff, the bats and the falling apart is not new. Minimized, but not new. So I make a motion that I can be able to, can you say that I can execute this letter? Wait a second, does it say that in there?
You have to.
Okay, will you capture?
And authorize the county judge to execute that agreement.
Well, you made a motion.
I made, oh, I need to make a motion to, okay, I make a motion that we sign this letter and allow me to execute it, now your turn. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to adjourn. All right, we'll see y'all, thank you everybody for coming.
Who made the motion?
I second the motion.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.